I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Morganton, August 1st, 2016. If you'll please stand and have the pledge to the flag. I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we have an invocation to be given by Reverend Adam Bowling with the Associate Pastor of the First Presbyterian Church.
Let us pray. Almighty and loving God, Creator of all that is seen and unseen, we give you thanks and praise this evening. We thank you for the fine city of Morganton, North Carolina, a place for so many to live and enjoy and prosper. We thank you for the places where we gather for fellowship and recreation, for the Greenway, Catawba Meadows Park, the historic downtown square, and Martha's Park, just to name a few. As we enjoy these places, help us to always remember that you are the Creator and giver of all good gifts. We are only the stewards of your creation and of your city. Help us also not to forget those who do not have a place to sleep, who are struggling to find a job, or who do not know where their next meal will come from. Help us to be your hands and feet in our own community, helping out organizations like Burke United Christian Ministries, The Meeting Place, Habitat for Humanity, and Options. Let us never forget the lost and the least of these, for our care for them says much more about us than any title or position. On this evening, we lift up to you our leaders and representatives, Ronnie Thompson, our mayor, John Cantrell, Forrest Fleming, Sidney Simmons, our councilmen, Sally Sandy, our city manager, and Louis Vina, our city attorney. Guide and direct them as they make decisions for the residents of Morganton. Thank you for giving them the gifts of leadership and discernment. We pray that the decisions made this evening will be in accord with your will and direction. As national tensions rise across our land during this election year, we pray for peace, justice, and unity. We thank you for the men and women who serve in our armed forces, as public safety officers, firemen and women, and all emergency response personnel. Keep them safe and secure, and help them make good decisions for our community and for the common good. We thank you for their service, and we ask that you help them feel our prayers and support each and every day. Finally, we pray that Morganton will continue to be a place of welcome for people of all races, nationalities, and creeds. Help us all to be good neighbors, offering support and care when needed. Now to him who by the power at work within us is able to accomplish abundantly far more than all we can ask or imagine, to him be the glory in the church and in the city, to all generations, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Bowling. I'd like to introduce our city council to my far right, Forrest Fleming, city councilman, Louis Vina, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our city manager, Sidney Simmons, councilman, John Cantrell, Mayor Pro Tem, Kelly Russell, our recording secretary, and we've got Joy Hearn Guzman, our interpreter for the deaf. Under public advocacy, we have some upcoming events. At Kama, we have our Back Porch Series, which will feature Strictly Clean and Decent on August the 4th at 7:00 PM. The Hush Puppies will play August the 18th at 7:00 PM. And on Main Street, Colin Ray will play August 25th at 7:30 PM. I'd like to remind the people at home and in the audience that Farmer's Market are Saturdays behind the Old Depot, and on Wednesdays on North Green Street. The 3rd Thursday in August, which would be August 18th from 5:00 to 7:00, there will be an art crawl in downtown Morganton. And our Historic Morganton Festival will be September the 9th through the 10th. I'd like to call on our Main Street Coordinator Sharon Jablonsky to sort of give us a highlight on what might be happening at the Historic Morganton Festival.
Sure, call on somebody that knew.
Yes.
It's September 9th and 10th. We have Mo Pitney opening up for Chase Bryant on Friday evening. And again this year, we're not going to start until 8:00, and with the main act being Chase Bryant won't go on until 9:30, so that of course it'll be football games, so that the kids can still make it after the football games. Saturday, Joe Lasher Jr., who has a huge incredible following out of Asheville, will open up for Love and Theft. And Love and Theft would be probably our largest act, although Chase Bryant and them are pretty much up there. So, of course, we've got the other stages. We have some incredible local acts that'll go on the Pepsi stage this year. They will actually start on Friday, Friday afternoon after 5:00, and then go into Saturday. The kids' stage is full this year. We've got a lot of fun things for the kids. We just got all the rack cards, the posters, and the tent cards today. The UPS store, I have to say, this prints them for us, they are stunning. The posters are absolutely beautiful. A big shout out to Michael Burley, who works, of course, for us, incredible landscaper. I don't know, I never know his official title, but he's our dupe all child. And he, once again, created the logo for the festival this year, and if you pay attention to it, everything is in detail. And we went and visited the TV stations for the last two weeks in Greenville and Spartanburg, South Carolina, and all of Charlotte, and Winston-Salem, and took them a 45 record, of which everybody had a fit over, and put the logo in the middle because his design is of a logo on the record. So, we've had some fun with it. We're looking forward to it. We hope you'll put it on your calendar and come out. It's going to be a good time, lots of vendors, lots of food, so I appreciate it.
Thanks Sharon.
Who's going to explain to the kids what a record is?
Believe it or not, because all the executives will bring in their other team members, they said they knew what a 45 was. But only one executive called that it was a small hole instead of a big hole, a traditional 45. When you see it, you'll know what I mean. So, yeah, we had a good time with it.
Thanks Sharon. We will pray for good weather.
Yeah.
We have a very special award next, 2015 North Carolina Area Wide Optimization Program Award. I'll call on Randy Hines. Randy's from the Asheville Regional Office of the North Carolina Department of Energy and Natural Resources, the Division of Water Resources, and the Public Water Supply Section. I'm not sure, Randy, you can wear a name tag that big, but we are glad you're here, and we look forward to this presentation.
Yeah, I just thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. We always hear how blessed we are in the mountains to have a great water quality source, Lake James and the Catawba River. But what we're here to hear about tonight is the blessing of having a great water treatment facility and an excellent staff that makes it happen. Without effective treatment, all of our customers and everyone that does utilize our water wouldn't be able to enjoy the highest quality water in the state. And Randy's going to be here to tell us a little bit about that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be back once again. You may recall I was here last year presenting this award for the 2014 award. Very pleased to be back again for the 2015 award. The Area Wide Optimization Program, or AWOP as we call it in the business, is an award that was created by the EPA in 2002 and is awarded to water treatment facilities that are able to consistently achieve an enhanced level of treatment that exceeds regulatory standards during any given calendar year. Specifically, the treatment goals associated with this AWOP award target the plant's ability to remove turbidity. You may recall from my talk last year that turbidity is a measure of clarity of the water. The regulatory standard for turbidity is 0.3 NTUs. However, the finished water goal for, that was established by the EPA for the AWOP program, established a limit of 0.1 NTUs 95% of the time, and it must never exceed the .3 NTU regulatory standard. The objective of this enhanced turbidity goal is to improve public health protection. Studies have shown that achieving the enhanced turbidity goal provides a tenfold reduction in microbial contaminants in the finished drinking water, including Cryptosporidium giardia parasites, which are known to cause intestinal illness. As I said, I was here last year, presented the award for 2014, back again this time to do it for 2015. This is the seventh time that the city has been awarded the AWOP achievement. Understand that this award is only possible through the dedication and hard work of Brad Bors, Jason Green, the rest of the staff of the water treatment plant, and most importantly, the support of the council. As a representative of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the Public Water Supply Section, I can say that the efforts are much appreciated. So I would like to congratulate everyone that's involved and make sure that y'all understand that you should be very proud of the work that these employees do every day in achieving this award. It is a significant achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the plaque that should be hanging at the treatment plant?
In the office.
In the office.
Jason, would you like to add anything?
No, but thank you. Thank you for your support, and like he said, couldn't do it without my employees, so thank you.
Randy, thanks so much for visiting one more time.
Appreciate it. Look forward to doing it again next year.
Right. We also have some Department of Labor awards. I'm going to call on our Human Resource Director, Russ, to please explain and give out, or at least explain the awards to us, Russ.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, councilman and mayor. Each year, our Risk Management Coordinator submits applications to the Department of Labor about all the accidents and incidents that we've had over that year. A total of 13 applications were submitted, and I am proud to say that we have received awards on 10 of those applications. We had three departments that have received Silver Awards. In order to achieve that award, you must have an average of 50% below the industry average for days away from work. And the three departments that received this award are the Cemetery and Grounds, this was their first year, the Street Department, their second consecutive year, and the Recreation Department for their fourth consecutive year. We also had seven departments receive Gold Awards. To receive this award, you must be at least 50% below the industry average for days away from work and job transfer light duty restrictions as well. The seven departments are the Sanitation Department for the first year, Design Development for the second consecutive year, Community House and Main Street for the second consecutive year, the Administrative Departments for the third year, Kama for the fourth year, the Wastewater Treatment Plant for the sixth consecutive year, and the Water Treatment Plant for the 17th consecutive year. So Jason is doing it well with his people as well, so we are very proud of our employees. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to publicly commend them for the work that they do and the priority that they make, safety. And we'll be getting in touch with each department later on in the next few weeks or so to kind of publicly recognize them as well. Thank you.
Russ, thanks so much. Next on our agenda, North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally, do we have an update?
We don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Next is consideration of changing city council meeting date for September 2016. Sally?
September the 5th is Labor Day and a holiday, so we will ask you to consider moving our September meeting to the second Monday, which would be September 12th. That's the Monday after the festival.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
No motion to change Morganton City Council from September the 5th to September 12th, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next is our consent agenda. I believe we have five items on the consent agenda, Sally?
We do, and we would ask that you approve those in one motion unless somebody would like an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those items include minutes from the regular meeting on June 6th, minutes from a special meeting and closed session on June 20th, which was for budget adoption, a consideration of professional services agreement for Phase 2 stormwater assistance from the Western Piedmont Cog, that's an annual contract, in the amount of $5,189, amending contracts for our annual water tank maintenance to include all of our water tanks, and award of a contract for a Silver Creek Sewer Pump Station Improvement Study, that's quite a title, in the amount of $39,000 to assess the workings and any needed repairs and upgrades at that pump station, and then tax releases in the amount of $5,850.39.
Do any council members wish to delete any item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a request by Roger Dreher to permanently close and abandon an unused cul-de-sac right-of-way at the end of Rain Tree Lane. Louis, do you want to do this one?
Sure.
Okay.
You will recall that at the August meeting, well, I'll, he can do that after I, you'll recall at the last meeting, we talked about this and called a public hearing. This is the street Rain Tree Lane off of Jamestown Road where the platted cul-de-sac at the end was, is down in a steep hole basically, and the actual cul-de-sac that was built is above that, and there's a diagram that reflects that. And the owner, Mr. Dreher, owns the property surrounding that, requested closing, and staff was agreeable to that. Now.
We'll have a public hearing open for consideration of a request submitted to permanently close and abandon an unused cul-de-sac right-of-way at the end of Rain Tree Lane. Would anybody like to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward. Give you a name and where you live.
I'm Roger Dreher, and I live at the end of Rain Tree Lane. And in 1999, when this, when they were going to move the cul-de-sac, Wayne Harris was the city engineer at the time. And the agreement that I had with him was that he needed a little bit of my land, and for that I would get the cul-de-sac that was not going to take place. And about a month later, he quit, or resigned, or whatever, however that stuff works. And so his fill-in, I talked to him about it, and he said he couldn't do anything because he was just filling in until a new engineer was put into place. So I kind of forgot about it. So, but I'm 76 years old now, and I probably got about 10 more years left because I had about four heart things. And I want to be able to sell that property with a clear title without any snafus at the end of the time. So, where do we go from here?
We will close the public hearing, have a vote in just a minute, but we appreciate you coming and speaking to us. Would council like to ask Mr. Dreher anything?
What, Mr. Dreher, what is your real concern about this? Did you expect to get some property in that form of agreement, or what is your?
Well, basically, I'd like the deal that Wayne made just honored, that's all. That was the original arrangement. I would get that, the old cul-de-sac property, and he'd get my property with no, you know, just shifted back and forth. And by the way, just another thing, at the same time, he asked me about a, to get a right-of-way for a person that lived at the end of one of the cul-de-sacs over on the other side of that allotment, because his septic tank was failing, he had tried it twice and it didn't work. And he'd tried to get a right-of-way from the person that owned the property right next door to that house, and the guy wouldn't go along with him, and so he asked me if I would, and I told him to go ahead and put the right-of-way in, I mean, yeah, the sewer in, to join up with the sewer pipe down at the end of the hill.
Roger, thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Council, we've heard the issue. Do we need a motion?
Who gets, I think, questions, who gets the old cul-de-sac?
Mr. Dreher, I believe, owns all the land that adjoins the area being closed. Therefore, as the only adjoining property owner, he'll get the property.
Basically, the cul-de-sac was platted, and it's really steep, and was never built that way, and it was built up closer than it was originally platted, and so we'd be reverting that back.
So the man that spoke will get the property, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes, if they're the owners of the land on both sides, which I believe they are, then...
You understand, you understand what we're saying there, Mr. Dreher?
I believe so. If I might, in your packet, the proposed resolution and order, there is a, on page three, there is a section called "Quick Claim Title," and what it says is that all the right and title now vested in the city is hereby released, quick-claimed, and conveyed to Roger and Mary Dreher as the abutting property owner in accordance with statutory provisions. And this will be recorded, this resolution will be recorded in the Register of Deeds, so it will have the effect of being a conveyance to the Dreher.
I move we approve a resolution of intent to permanently close and abandon a portion of unopened cul-de-sac right-of-way at the end of Rain Tree Lane.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next is to consider a calling of a public hearing to consider amendments to development incentive grant agreement with Alpine Mill LLC. Louis, you want to pick that one also?
Sure. You will recall that in 2014, the city joined with the county in entering into a development incentive grant, a DIG agreement with Alpine Mill for the Old Drexel Plant 7, a project which would have created a mixed-use development to be done in phases, and of course, agreed that the city and county would, in return, make these grants based on the dramatic increase in the tax value. Some work was done on that by Alpine Mill, and now, however, they have approached the city and the county with a revised plan. The chief changes are that, first of all, it would become an all-residential development instead of a mixed-use, with 62 apartments instead of 44, but with no commercial establishments. Secondly, it would all be done in one phase instead of in staggered phases, and that with a completion date of June 30, or July 1, 2018, instead of the original plan for Phase 1 to be by June 30 of 2016. And also, they anticipate an increased investment, which would, of course, mean an increased tax value even more so, and therefore would mean an increased amount of the grant, since it's based entirely on how much they increase the tax value. The way it times out, the first year in which they would receive a grant would be 2019. If the project is completed in 2018, the valuation would be January, the January 2019 valuation, and they would receive a grant for up to five years, from city and county.
Thank you Louis. We're pleased to have Jenny Irvin, who will be at least involved in the project in the audience. Council, what's your desire?
I move to call for a public hearing at the council's scheduled meeting at 6:15 PM on Monday, September the 12th, 2016, to consider the proposed amendment on the development incentive grant agreement between the city and Burke County and Alpine Mills LLC.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
If, just to be clear, if I might, of course, this has to go to the county, and I believe they are starting to take this up tomorrow, is that right, Jenny? And we'll have, they'll have to have a public hearing, and then, of course, we will. It'll take all three parties to agree to the change.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of a neighborhood-wide speed limit of 25 miles an hour in the residential neighborhood that includes Riverside Drive, Riverside Court, Steeple Heights Lane, Montrose Drive, Linden Street, Woodbine Terrace, Kenwood Street, Lowerwood Drive, Hillside Lane, Woodland Place, and Woodland Drive. Sally?
Yes, this is in response to some citizens' complaints in the area. We have performed a traffic engineering study, looked at the area, Public Safety and our engineer have looked at it. As you've just said, it's a residential area, there really are no sidewalks in that area for walkers and residents to use, so you have to walk in the street. The area is obviously served by West Union Street, where the speed limit is 35, and the proposal before you, and agreed upon by Public Safety and the engineer, is to lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour in the area that you have just described. If you do that, then we would sign it and amend our ordinance so that that could be enforced.
And this is called an umbrella 25?
Basically, you'll sign it at the entrances to the area, and then the whole area will be 25.
Okay. Council, do I have a motion?
Move we authorize an implementation of an umbrella 25 mile an hour speed limit for the neighborhood that includes Riverside Drive, Riverside Court, Steeple Heights Lane, Montrose Drive, Linden Street, Woodbine Terrace, Kenwood Street, Lowerwood Drive, Hillside Lane, Woodland Place, and Woodland Drive, and installation of the appropriate neighborhood speed limit 25 miles per hour signs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilman, for doing that for me. Thank you. Any discussion?
Read it.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of a sidewalk encroachment with Striker Properties LLC at 108 West Union Street. Sally?
And you have approved several sidewalk encroachment agreements around the town. This one is in front of 108 West Union Street. It is the new, soon to be the new home of the Kitchen Connection, which has been located out at the Greenway Shopping Center for quite some time and is moving downtown. They have asked for an encroachment so that they could set up, and you have some photographs included in your materials, an area where they would have several outdoor tables. You would be able to taste wine and sit outside at the tables. There will be the delineation, and I believe it's by barrels, if you look at the barrels that are in your packet, we have some photographs for you that would delineate that. When you do the encroachment, you would still have five feet of sidewalk available for folks to get by and to travel around.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Boast and to allow for an encroachment by Striker Properties LLC on the sidewalk in front of 108 West Union Street for the purpose of seating and the consumption of wine for customers of Kitchen Connection.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One question, the ABC laws, they have no problem with this, is that correct?
That is correct. They just require the delineation, and if you look downtown, there's lots of different kinds. There's no specific kind that you have to have.
Any other questions or discussion?
Design, I guess, is a better word.
Yes.
Sharon, what's the, aren't they about ready to move?
They are moving now.
Moving now.
They'll be open after the next meeting.
Great.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We also have on the agenda consideration to award a contract for the fabrication and installation of the fourth phase of a wayfinding signage in town. Sally?
You'll recall back in 2013 that we did the first phase of, or we approved the first phase of wayfinding signage, and now we finally reached the fourth one, and what we think is our final one. what we think is our final one. You'll recall that in last year, and this is a carryover from last year, that we had budgeted to get some federal grant dollars in order to do some additional signage, and found out in that process that they will not fund signage along DOT or state highways. So we changed the scope of the project. This will include eleven signs installed along Enola Road, Bethel Road, South Sterling Street, East Union Street, Catawba Meadows Drive, and downtown, and it will be for forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We had forty thousand dollars in the budget that is carried over and proposed to you in our committee meetings to make up the three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars in the current year's budget. The lowest responsible bidder is the contractor that we use for phases two and three and has also bid the same unit prices as he gave us for phases two and three. So we would ask you to consider authorizing this contract.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion.
Motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Fleming.
I yield to the man to my left if you wish to do it.
Motion to authorize a contract for services to create his impressions of North Cross, North Cross, Georgia for the amount of forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Next is consideration of additional handicap parking spaces in the downtown business district. Sally?
In June, the downtown parking committee met, and one of the items considered by that group was to add two additional parking spaces in what we call the Calvary Lutheran Church Lot, which is across from the Methodist Church, next to the Lutheran Church, kinda catty corner to the community house. That is a lot that we lease and that the city uses to provide public parking. You see in your materials, picture where the proposal would be. There are already two spaces, would recommend adding two more. That would put four handicap spaces and allow two of those to be van-accessible.
That would help the church, and it would help our community house, correct?
It would.
I move to approve the addition of two additional handicap parking spaces in a lot off of King Street beside the Calvary Lutheran Church.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of a memorandum of understanding concerning the development of possible hotel site off South Sterling Street. Sally?
I would ask that you delay action on this item and allow us to bring it back to you at the September twelfth meeting. There, there are several parties to this, and several of the parties are still negotiating a couple of their commitments in this agreement. Certainly, if there are any changes on our part, we will bring that back to you in committee structure before the next meeting.
Do I have a motion to delay this until the September meeting?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion will be discussed at the September meeting. Next is consideration of appointment to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Sally?
Come in. The, the term of Mark Miller on the ABC Board is expiring. It's a three-year term on August the fifth. You received a letter from Steve Gregory, the chairman, expressing the board's interest in having Mark reappointed to that because of his expertise in accounting, the letter says. Will also tell you that you have received an application from Mr. Robert Carr, who has stated an interest in being appointed to this board. It is a council appointment, and the term will go from August fifth, two thousand and sixteen, to August fifth, two thousand and nineteen, so it's a three-year term.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we appoint Mark Miller to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the term to expire August five, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Do we have any nominations?
I'm making a, a point, Robert Carr, to the ABC Board, term to expire August the fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay. We have two nominations. We'll just vote on them in the order in which they were presented. All in favor of Mark Miller, please signify by raising your right hand. All in favor of Rob Carr, please signify by raising your right hand. I would ask council to take another vote at, at this time, so we're gonna do them in reverse order. All those in favor of Rob Carr, please raise your right hand, and all in favor of Mark Miller, raise your right hand. Mark Miller will be appointed by a vote of three to one. Do we have anything else to come before the board? Louis? Council, anything to add? Put your work clothes on for our downtown Morganton Festival. If not, council is adjourned.